Good evening, everyone. Thank you for coming tonight. I'd like to call to order the April 23, 2015 meeting of the City of Bellingham Planning Commission. This time, I'd like to ask everyone to silence electronic devices, laptops, cellphones, anything that beeps or makes noise, please turn it off for us. And I'd like to have Heather call the role for the Planning Commission.
Tom Grinstad?
Here.
Jeff Brown?
Here.
Garrett O'Brien?
Here.
Ali Taishi?
Here.
Phyllis McKee?
Here.
Steve Crooks?
Here.
Sarice Noah?
Here.
Okay, and we've got some additional members here tonight, so I'd like to turn it over to Dan to call to order the Council Planning Subcommittee.
Thank you. Dan Hamel, Bellingham City Council, sitting in for Jack Weiss. I'd like to call to order the Planning Committee of the Bellingham City Council and have Heather do the roll call for that.
Terry Borneman?
Here.
Daniel Hamel?
Here.
Michael Lillquist?
Here.
Pinky Vargas?
Here.
Okay, thank you. So, as you can tell, there's more of us up here tonight. Tonight's meeting is a joint meeting between the Planning Commission as a whole body and the Planning Subcommittee, plus a few council members, I believe, regarding the comprehensive plan update and our population growth projections and UGA boundary. So, we're going to go through the regular Planning Commission meeting steps here at the beginning, addressing our minutes and a typical public comment period for comment unrelated to tonight's topic. And then, we'll move into our work session on the topic of the evening, and that will involve both the council members and the Planning Commission members, and we'll have a group discussion regarding that just as a whole. And no decisions are going to be made tonight, no motions are going to be made regarding anything. This is just an opportunity for all of us to get information together at the same time consistently. We will have an opportunity for public comment. There's a lot of people here tonight. Sure, many of you want to make comment. So, I think what we'll do is have staff present on the topic, and then we'll allow some limited discussion amongst the body up here, questions, things like that for staff, and then we'll move into public comment opportunity at that point, and then we'll have additional discussion if we still want to at that stage. That way, you all don't have to wait till the very end to talk. And with that, I think we'll move into the next item, which is our public comment period because we have no minutes to approve tonight. So, if there's anyone here who wants to speak about something other than tonight's discussion topic in the work session, which is the UGA boundary recommendation, then now's your chance to come down and hop on the mic and let us know what you think. Please state your name and address, and you've got about three or four minutes to let us know what you're thinking about. Thank you.
My name is Barbara McTae. I live at 3121 Peabody Street in the Cornwall neighborhood. I moved here a year ago and love Bellingham. But I'm concerned about the process that I see here, especially with the idea of adding detached accessory dwelling units to the single-family zoning without going through the standard zoning process and notifying everybody. I'm afraid there's some sort of a process here that is not addressing notification to all the homeowners of those areas if they want to make a change like this, if it's not going through the standard zoning process. It is the process I'm concerned about. And so, I want to make sure that if there's any change to the single-family zoning, that it goes through a process that notifies everyone and that is following the normal zoning process. Is that clear?
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to make comments about something other than tonight's topic? Okay, so seeing no one, we'll...Rick? Yes?
If I could just respond to that.
Yes.
No action is proposed in front of either Planning Commission or City Council for adoption of accessory dwelling unit rules at this point in time. We have been developing a draft ordinance, and once that ordinance is perfected through the Planning Commission, it will be publicly noticed. We welcome comment and review, and no...the standard processes will apply, so I want to make sure that Ms. McTae is aware of that.
Thank you. Okay, so with that, we'll close the public comment period, and we'll move into our main topic for the night, which is our work session on the UGA boundary recommendation. So, I think I'm going to turn it over to staff, and Greg, it looks like you're going to do an introduction.
Yes.
Thank you.
All right. Greg Ockett, Planning Department. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for coming out, and thank all of you for coming out. This is a little bit of a unique meeting, but we have somewhat of a unique topic, so I think it's very appropriate that we all hear this information together so that we have a common set of facts to work with. I'll start the presentation tonight and run through about the first half, and then I'll turn it over to Rick, and he's going to take it from there. Let me introduce staff here that we have tonight. Lisa Poole and Chris Beehe from our staff are here, and also Moshe Quinn, and then Brent Baldwin and Ted Carlson are here from the Public Works Department. Are there any other staff members hiding about the room? I don't see any others, so we'll dispense with the introductions. The objectives for tonight's work session: We want to talk about the comp plan update and what we're required to do, talk just briefly about the process to date, identify some key issues associated with population growth projections and the UGA recommendation. Rick's going to actually talk a lot about the capacity and constraints in terms of our land supply in the city, in the urban growth area or UGA, and areas adjacent to the city and the UGA. As was mentioned, Mr. Chairman, no recommendations are being sought tonight. This is informational meeting, and we have more meetings scheduled, and I'll get to those in a second. Our basic update requirements: This is what we have to do to comply with the Growth Management Act. We have to address any changes in the GMA that have occurred since we adopted our comprehensive plan in 2006. And we've done a pretty good job of keeping our plan updated over the years. There are some things that we need to address, but we have been fortunate enough to complete a new economic development chapter, a new chapter on the environment, and also an update to the parks, recreation, and open space chapters here fairly recently. And the last item that we need to do is we need to review and update our critical areas ordinance. So, those are the things that we absolutely have to do. And we'll be focusing on the second bullet tonight: Review urban growth area and population growth projections. In terms of the context for the comp plan update, as I said, this is not an overhaul of our existing plan. We want to build on the existing policy foundation that's there. We want to include the council's adopted legacies and strategic commitments. Those are great policy statements that we want to add to the plan. Refine the existing goals and policies and incorporate the new public input that we get out of this process, and improve the readability of the plan. In terms of process, this is where we are: Planning Commission UGA recommendation. That recommendation will go to the City Council, and the council will hold a public hearing and work sessions. That will occur in June and July. So, the Planning Commission is going to be working on this for the next three meetings at least, and then it'll go to council in June and July. Later this summer, the final EIS will be released. We'll have another open house, and then our draft plan will be released, and the Planning Commission will spend most of the second half of this year reviewing the various chapters of the plan. And those will go to the City Council early in 2016 with council adoption by the state deadline of June 30, 2016. In terms of public participation, we've had three sort of major events, and we had a survey in the fall that over 1,200 people participated in. We had a large open house in March, and we had 115 or 20 people attend that meeting. And then, on an ongoing basis, we have the Engage Bellingham website. This is a place where people can go and join the conversation, and we hope that you all In terms of key issues that we've been mulling over and working on, obviously, the population forecast and the UGA boundaries is a key issue in this comp plan update. It's really the first major decision that we'll need to make. Other issues, of course, housing choice and affordable single-family housing, neighborhood character, and neighborhood character is one of the key tenants of our current comprehensive plan, and we're not proposing any changes to that. Urban villages are another important part of our infill growth strategy. Concern for the natural environment, obviously, and then who pays for growth? We'll have a nice discussion about that. In terms of the population growth forecast, here are the questions that we need to answer: What are the most appropriate numbers to use? Can Bellingham and its UGA accommodate the growth? And Rick's going to talk quite a bit about that. And also on this, if Bellingham and its UGA cannot accommodate the forecast of growth, where should it occur? In terms of population growth forecasts, we have a low, medium, and high numbers that we got from our consultants. We reviewed these numbers last year and made a recommendation to Wacom County, both from the Planning Commission and from the council, to use the high-range forecast. So, you can see the low, medium, and high on the screen there. They range from the low at 20...a total growth of about 23,000 to the high range, almost 36,000, and you can see how many people per year each of those forecasts would be. In terms of looking back, we can look at recent history and know what has happened. During the 1990s, we grew by an average of about 1,600 people per year. We actually grew faster in the 90s than we did in the 2000s, where we grew by about 1,400. If you go back to 1990 to the present, which is a 24-year period, which is the longest period that we really have to look at, the timeframe that we actually had urban growth boundaries, we averaged about 1,300 people per year. And then, the last 14 years included the major slowdown, and the average dropped to Key issue: Housing choice. Again, can Bellingham provide a complete range of housing choices within the existing UGA to address changing demographics? These are questions to ponder, and we will be addressing these throughout the process. Affordable single-family housing: What are the impacts of future growth on the city's supply of affordable, single-family housing stock? And must the city...or must the UGA boundaries expand to increase the city's supply of affordable, single-family housing? Neighborhood character: Can infill occur without overwhelming a neighborhood? And what types of infill development are appropriate? We'll be talking about that a lot. Urban villages: We've done plans for the villages that you see on the screen. Some of them have been more successful than others. It's interesting to note that 45% of all of the residential units that have been built in Bellingham since we adopted our plan in 2006 have been built in these urban villages. We've had some great success in downtown, and Fairhaven, and Barclay. You can see the numbers. And not such good success in Old Town, Fountain, and Samish Way. So, if these are a key part of our growth strategy, what can we do to help jump-start development in the urban villages that have not seen much activity, areas like Old Town and Samish Way and the Fountain District? The natural environment: How can the natural environment continue to be protected, maintained, and restored as the city grows? Really important question. Who pays for growth? Does growth pay for itself? Or what are the costs that are passed on to the public? And what are the public costs associated with growth in areas anticipated to see development? We're working on an analysis of those costs right now. Really, we want tonight to frame the UGA boundary discussion. Rick's going to talk about what the growth capacity within the current city is and within the current UGA, and then look at potential constraints and other issues that are associated with areas that are just outside of our UGA if we decide that expansion of the boundary is appropriate. We've done a lot of work in those areas, and we'll be able to provide a fair amount of information to you about the nature of those areas tonight and in the upcoming meetings. And with that, I get to turn it over to Rick.
Members of the Planning Commission, members of the council, we're going to take a tour, and the tour is of our community. We're going to start at the closest level. That's our current city boundary. We are not about to shrink our city boundary statutorily. It's established, and UGAs must...cities must include all of its boundary within a UGA, so it's a starting point. This graphic depicts current development patterns, and I think you could see those areas that are undeveloped have other uses intended for them: the arboretum, parkland. Areas that are experiencing growth to the north are those areas that are characterized by lesser development. At the very first, we'll look within our city boundaries, and we're working with the metric right now for the purposes of this exercise of accommodating the high range. That's 36,000 new residents over a 20-year horizon and 23,000 new jobs. Clearly, that's the broadest expanse we would consider in the ranges that are afforded to the city. Looking right now at our urban villages, a key component, as noted by Greg, of our strategy is to develop urban villages. Urban villages are those areas that are characterized by mixed use, higher-density residential. They tend to occur and have been planned for those areas that have the best infrastructure to support them. As Greg noted, development has been uneven, but to be fair, other communities with similar strategies have found the same thing. In Tacoma, there are 17 urban centers and urban villages, and they've developed sort of like ours. Some have shown significant growth, and some have not started. These are long-term prospects. They take 20 years. They're responsive to market changes. The city cannot create a market, but when the market is ripe, we want to make sure we're available to have the infrastructure and other things we need to facilitate growth in those areas. It's the most economical way to grow where existing services are. What I can say on this is just an overarching comment: Many communities view this kind of analysis as a numbers game, and they draw another circle on the map and said, "Here's the undefined urban village, and let's put whatever growth would be coming in that urban village." That might pass muster with the hearings board, but that really doesn't serve the community itself. Our intent in this presentation and our work to serve both bodies, the council and the Planning Commission, is to find a solution that actually is sustainable and can be achieved, whatever numbers you select. Looking at the West Baker View corridor, that's an area that's experiencing significant commercial growth and potential residential growth. It's an active area of town. That's where cost goes going. It is one that also...we're fortunate in that we're ahead of the curve in terms of planning for the area. We're not after the fact. We have both parks and circulation plans, transportation plans, utility plans that acknowledge it. We...no limitations with the interchange at I-5. We've been actively working to address that before it becomes a significant detriment to sound and sustainable development. In that area to the north, we anticipate getting a number of jobs and limited amount of housing, four or 500 units themselves. The areas that are shown now, highlighted, these are about 1,300 lots. There are about 804 multifamily and 533, single-family. These are things that are in the pipeline right now, either issued permits or soon-to-be-issued permits for development. Those we can largely count on as they're being advanced, and we believe they'll proceed to completion. This is a key slide. One of the things we need to do is a land capacity analysis. And I will say that this time around, all of the cities in Wacom County are using the same methodology. That methodology has been vetted by Department of Commerce and by the hearings board and found to be sound. But we want to have additional rigor on that. While someone might go in and find a couple of units here and a couple of units there and disagree with some of our judgment, we feel very confident that any independent source reviewing it will see that we erred, if anything, to be conservative, to not anticipate just because it was zoned for 12 dwelling units, breaker, or we get 12 dwelling units. Many of the areas that have yet to develop are characterized by critical areas and other means. When we look at that and apply our analysis within our city boundaries, we find 2,800 multifamily and about 2,100, 2,200, single-family possible. We also are fortunate in that we have a number of institutions that, in looking at their long-term plans, will establish significant employment in our community. When looking at the hospital, both at Western Washington's master plan for the next 20 years, BTC and Wacom New Community College, and the Purple Industrial areas, we find fairly quickly that our target number for jobs can be accommodated within the current city itself fairly closely. There's much discussion about the nature of the jobs, and that's something we'll talk about as we go into the specific review. Are they family wage jobs or not? That's a discussion for the future. Looking within our city, then, taking all of these component parts together, we can accommodate 29,000 residents, and we have about 19,000 new jobs. And as you look at that, it's pretty darn close to the mid-range number. We now step out, and we'll say, "We have portions of the community that are not part of the incorporated city but are identified for expansion into our urban growth area." And I need to preface these remarks with, there are two tests for having things in the urban growth area. The first test is if you demonstrate you need it to accommodate growth. Your population can't be accommodated within the city, the number you've chosen. You need to look a little further along. There is also a second and equally important test, and that is, we have a number of areas that are characterized by urban growth. They have our infrastructure, our services, characterized by urban densities. By definition, those areas need to be included in the UGA when adjacent to a city. May not accommodate much more growth, but because of their characteristics, ultimately, they should be part of the city itself. Looking at that, there are a number of areas in our UGA that has some growth potential. We estimate the capacity is about 1,000 housing units, about 1,200 jobs. We do have a number of areas that are characterized by that pre-existing growth, where we provide partial or all of our infrastructure utility services. And those areas we'll talk about right now, the Geneva area, the area north of Lake Wacom, does not have much yield. In essence, it wouldn't provide many units if brought into the city, but they would be costly to annex. And the reason they're costly is they were built to lower standards than the city currently has established. And once they become part of the city, the city is obligated to bring those standards up. That's response time, for example, for level of service for fire is a four-minute response time. It wouldn't be met by a part-time fire service. We'd need full-time fire service. Police response time, roads, stormwater, those are all deficiencies. What I could note on this is that every year, the legislature introduces bills that are intended to provide relief for communities like ours that have adjacencies that we serve that are characterized by urban growth but have existing deficiencies. Unfortunately, this year, like many before, none are moving forward that would provide us relief. Ultimately, we do need to find some vehicle that would allow us to bring these in and address those deficiencies, either with a pipeline to the Public Works Trust Fund or to some other funding mechanism, or to a means where voters can assess themselves to raise the level of service for a portion. The challenge, of course, is that they come in now, all of our community pays for those deferred costs. We do have a number of pending annexations, starting at the upper-left corner by Baker View on I-5. That one is constrained by capacity at that intersection. As I mentioned earlier, we're working actively to try to relieve that. We have one to the north that's currently in process, and one council members here might recall, to the northeast, which is currently pending. If you look at the number of units, though, it doesn't provide significant units. It does add some jobs to the mix itself. The airport itself is within our UGA. It's an essential public facility. It does provide perhaps the best opportunity for many assembly and industrial uses. Airports typically attract industrial uses because they're relatively immune to noise. Things falling off a forklift is less noise generation than a jet flying overhead. Typically, also, airports are located in areas that are flat, which favors the horizontal orientation for assembly and storage. We believe that the airport itself is appropriate in the UGA because of its regional nature and the uses that could be attracted around it. As part of our analysis, we've mentioned to both Planning Commission and council that we did a reconnaissance on the northern tier across the city to assess wetland issues. It's long been speculated about the nature and extent of wetlands. Within our UGA, there are significant wetlands located to the northwest and northeast of the airport. These wetlands are so significant that it is unlikely they could be mitigated, and we would not really include those for significant growth in that area itself. The Lemmy Tribe has a portion of land near the Slater Road interchange that would provide jobs. The jobs would count towards us, but the revenue, of course, would not be forthcoming. We do likely be...we would likely become the utility provider for that facility, and that might allow the city at some future date to come to an arrangement regarding those uses. Folks asked, "Are there areas that you can remove from the UGA?" We note that our preliminary review indicates a small one that potentially has been a source of contention in these chambers, and that would be one. There's not much yield on it, but that would be one that could be considered. So, looking within our urban growth area, we can add about 3,500 residents, and our employment capacity, which was met previously, is supplemented by that. If we're still working on the high projection, we're about 3,000 residents short. I should note that in this analysis, we did not anticipate significant increases in infill development within the city itself or its UGA. We will certainly accept development as occurs, as permitted by our current zoning, but this is not an aggressive program to force infill as a means of meeting the end. We think that our discussions to date and our analysis have shown that our community character is so important that the risks are great. We do think that infill is possible but may not be ripe yet in our neighborhoods. So, we would take what we could get, I guess is the easiest way to put it, at this point, but we're not looking at that as the solution for growth itself. So, now we look, saying, "If we're 3,000 folks short, where does one go to accommodate that?" And let's look around the city itself outside of the UGA. To our east, the land is constrained by the watershed. City has made significant strides to protect its water source, and that area would be taken out of the mix. In the areas to the south and adjacent to the watershed, we have commercial forestry, parkland, areas that are in production and would not be akin for conversion to urban uses. That same wetland survey identified significant matrix of wetlands to the north. Those wetlands would provide a significant detriment for expansion of the UGA, and leapfrogging over those wetlands would largely be costly and inappropriate due to the extension of services. Moreover, those areas that are on the far side of the wetland matrices are characterized by exactly the kind of rural development that growth management was intended to protect and should remain in those kind of lower-density uses. We touched Ferndale to the northeast, northwest of our UGA, and although we did discuss invasion, we think that's probably not a viable choice at this time. So, that brings us to our last slide. If one is looking for areas to expand the UGA to accommodate population, only two come forward. One is the South U area, and the other is to the north near the Kai Tech properties. I should note that the areas that are asterisked are those that have sent inquiries about becoming part of the UGA to the city. So, I guess, in conclusion, what I could say is that the city of Bellingham is constrained in its opportunities for outward expansion. The issues before this body and council are what's the right balance for quality of life, preserving character in the neighborhoods, and accommodating growth. Growth is not as straightforward as...I'm just saying, draw the circle a little wider. There are constraints and costs. There are constraints and costs. We anticipate being able to look at some of those costs and bring them back to this body, the Planning Commission, for consideration, and ultimately to the city council, because one needs to go in eyes wide open. What's the existing deficiencies? What would those costs be to all members of the community? There's debate, perhaps, if whether growth pays for growth, and some would say there's a subsidy provided. What I can say is the construct we have in the city and in state law means that growth covers its expense for the project, but it doesn't pick up the deficiency that's pre-existing. That's all of our responsibilities. And since all of us will be looking to pay for that, it's important to know what that amount is. So one of our roles is to come forward and say, here's, here are your choices, and if you choose this, this is how much is deficient, and this is what it would cost. My colleagues and I would be happy to answer any questions you might have. Thank you.
Thank you, Rick. Okay, so I think we should give the council and commission members a chance to ask some questions if they want, or start a discussion before we take the public comment. It looks like Michael wants to start us, so let's go.
Well, first, I'd like to thank you for the really logical and orderly way you present information. For those of us who are looking at this for a while, you kind of confirmed the informal kind of logic that I'd kind of gone through in my head, where our options are, where opportunities are. And I appreciate the fact that you did what I did informally with rigor, and I can trust in that. And I understand that we're focusing on a particular set of issues, population growth and whether or not that requires increases in our boundaries through annexations or just increasing our UGAs for future annexations. Nonetheless, I kind of want to broaden the scope right away, because good land use is really tied to transportation, and bad land use drives bad transportation decisions. And sometimes, good transportation decisions are what make good land use decisions possible. They really need to go together. So I know this is just one part, but, so the question is, when do we start tying together the transportation aspects of it? Because to me, the real question, one of the real questions isn't just about the character and the quantity, but also location, and that's the transportation question. When will that come together in the process?
Typically, at this point, we frame the discussion. We're identifying venues you wish for us to explore. We will look at the transportation and the relative costs to provide it. It's part of our analysis within our UGA itself. We do have a transportation plan that currently covers the city and its UGA. Any potential expansion would have to be assessed. We are developing assessments for those UGA areas that potentially could come into the city already in the UGA, coming in, what that would be, and we hope to present that in the next week or two.
Kind of a chicken or egg question here, too, in the sense that you can plan where you need or want to put the growth, and then turn to Public Works and say, what kind of roads do I need to get there? What kind of bike paths do I need to get there? Or you can drive it the other way. You can say, where's the easiest place for me to provide transportation, and I'll need to put the growth there? In terms of who leads, who follows, is there any discussion yet on that issue?
The comp plan has significant guidance on that. It basically encourages us to do, that's the urban village strategy, urban center strategy, is because it minimizes transportation costs. That being said, it also, the comp plan also talks about providing a range of housing opportunities, and we need to balance that. Unfortunately, as you saw from the very first slide, the areas that we have most available for some types of development tend to be further out. So we have to balance those costs with the densities, and it's fair to assess that.
Thank you. Steve?
If I may paraphrase what was said earlier, that we are going to look at the population growth numbers. It was my impression that the Planning Commission, council, and the county has approved the high growth numbers. Are we going to read, look at those numbers, and adjust them again in this process?
So, yeah, the numbers that were adopted, were adopted for planning purposes. They were a starting point, basically, for the work that we've been talking about doing. So the assumption all along was, we were going to pick a number, and we were going to go and look at the impacts of that, and then we would have another opportunity to go back to the county and say, we've looked, we've analyzed the high number, and either we can accommodate it, and this is how, or we can't, and this is what we recommend happen. So we do have an opportunity to change the population growth forecast if we think it's appropriate, based on the analysis that we've done. So it's not set in stone, Steve.
Okay, so, so far, you've come up with the fact that we're 3,000 housing units short.
No, 3,000 people short.
People short.
Yeah. So land area for housing for 3,000 people is...
So we have the flexibility of dropping our high projection to the medium projection and meet our goals, is that correct?
We do have that flexibility, yes.
Terry?
Yeah, on this map, you show two, two and only two potentials for meeting, you know, growth, other area, other potential areas. What kind of numbers are we looking at? Do we have a breakdown on that, on the potential for population and potential for job creation of the two?
We do. And Chris will correct me if I get the numbers wrong. The South U Street area, the area at the lower end of the map, would accommodate about 1,000 people, based on the development pattern that's there. With the property to the north, the southern half of that property, the property owners estimate they could accommodate about 1,800 people in that southern half of the Kitec property. And I don't recall offhand the job numbers that we assigned to Kitec.
The, yeah, the job numbers are, in the south half of that, are in the range of about 150 to just under 400, and that's really dependent on what ends up landing there. It's a tourist commercial zone, and so depending on the form of that, what the floor area ratios, and the individual particular uses are, but that's, that's the range.
That was for U Street?
That was for the northerly.
Oh, for the northern.
Area there. The South U Street area really doesn't have much in the way of future employment zoning. It's a mix of residential.
That's what I assumed, but I...
Yeah.
Dan?
I just want to understand the logic behind arriving at the higher number. What was the purpose or the logic around that?
I might want to ask your colleagues. What I can say is...
I am new, so...
If I might, it's not uncommon to start with the largest number and see what the implications are. Often, we do that, just to see what the parameters are, largely because you want to say, what's the maximum impact of a potential action? It's a learning experience, and one can take the largest and peel back from it and see. There are a number of issues that have come up. Anecdotally, some folks were concerned that if we didn't take a larger number, the population would go into the rural county, for example. And we don't believe that's the case, based on recent discussions. But I could understand that as a basis to say, well, let's see, if we took full urban growth, what does that mean? Still, others are, again, I could speculate, and you'll hear a public comment on this, no doubt, this evening, are very interested in providing land that accommodate single-family housing. We are somewhat constrained, and we should note that, based on our projections within our current UGA, we'll go from about a 50/50 mix to about 43%, is that right, of single-family? So we would actually become more folks in multifamily. Single-family homes are still feasible and possible in Bellingham, thank heavens, compared to many of the other cities in the Puget Sound. And we really need to roll up our sleeves and find opportunities for them to be established.
Thank you. Phyllis?
Yes, could we have a discussion on the consequences of overestimating our numbers versus underestimating our numbers? I'd like to have some details on weighing that.
Yeah, there is a discussion in the memo that we wrote on population growth forecast that's part of your packet, that does, in a general way, talk about the concerns with either underestimating or overestimating. In terms of underestimating, you know, we plan capital facilities years in advance, things like upgrades to our sewage treatment plant, and those projects take years. So, you know, you don't want to overestimate your growth and have to build facilities that are more than what you need, and you don't want to be behind the curve, pick a low number, actually get more growth than that, and then you're trying to play catch-up with your roads and your sewage treatment plant and other facilities. Those are just some of the implications of too high or too low. And the nice thing is that we get to review this every few years. We never actually get to even the second half of that 20-year planning period, because we have to do this about every eight years. So we do have check-in points along the way. If we've overestimated or underestimated, we can, we can make adjustments.
Thank you.
Terry?
Yeah, for Dan, I can only speak for myself, but I think I can speak for majority of the council in terms of why the decision to go with the higher numbers, is we had the discussion about being, it comes down to the basic premise of the growth management. Where do you want growth? Do you want it in rural areas, or do you want it in the urban areas? Is it better to preserve our rural lands and have higher density in the urban areas? And part of our discussion was, if the county council was willing to work to put greater control on the growth in the county, we would be willing to look at ways to see if we could accommodate a higher proportion of growth in the city. Because, you know, we do fear that the thing of, yes, we'll take, we'll say we'll have higher growth numbers here, but it's still, we still lose that out there. But that was the discussion. You know, we have a lot of mixed pressures on it about, people want to preserve rural lands, people want to preserve that. Well, if we're not putting the growth there, then should cities be willing to take higher densities? And we said we were willing to look at those, but we want to see how that plays out. Can we accommodate it without ruining the character of the different neighborhoods and accommodate that, you know? I still think we can, if we can get more and higher growth in the urban cores, but I don't know if we can, that was the reasoning.
Just to back that up, I think that's a fair representation of the discussion that we had at the Planning Commission level, too, was the idea of, we have the total number. And can I ask a quick clarifying question? Because I think there might be some confusion in regards to this. When we talk about the high number, we're talking about just the amount that Bellingham is taking out of the total countywide number. We're not talking about changing the countywide number that the county chooses, is that correct? So, so from that premise, if we take less, the county will have to assign some numbers from, they can either lower their total number or assign more to other communities or the county rural areas? Can you clarify that?
Yeah, I think it's likely, what the county did was, they started with the mid-range forecast, and then they took all of the recommendations from all the cities, and that ended up being higher than the mid-range forecast, so that was the number that they picked. They could reduce that overall number. If Bellingham decides we need to, we want to take less, they could reduce the overall number. It seems unlikely that they would assign it to the other cities, because all of the other cities also went with the high-growth forecast.
So in the absence of lowering their total population projection, they would have to assign that density to the county?
That would be the choice.
So that was the dynamic we were discussing, effectively.
So how do small cities then factor into the mix, then, in terms of accommodating growth, you know, in Ferndale and Linden and so forth?
Yeah, I would say it's likely the cities, and I can't speak for them, but their motivation, but it appears that many of the other cities took the higher number because they have fairly large UGAs, looking at the boundaries and their current development. I think my colleagues would agree with that.
Michael?
I would say that Terry and Ollie fairly characterize the hope that if a higher number was chosen, the county's preliminary response, however, was to accept all the high numbers. And the unfortunate consequence, because the city, the county had set a target for the unincorporated areas as 15% of total growth, by all the cities, including Bellingham, increasing the total number, the amount of growth allowed in the unincorporated areas, rather than going down, actually went up by 1,000 units. So by increasing the countywide total from 273,000 to 280,000, the amount of growth that would be allowed and still meet the target of 15% rose from 10,200 to 11,200. So the game was supposed to be a zero-sum game. The way the county summers went preliminarily, it wasn't a zero-sum game. Every number went up, including the unincorporated areas. So that didn't achieve the goal that was talked about by the city council.
Steve?
A question as far as the two growth areas outlined on the exhibit shown right now in the north and the south. What is the process, for our process, to bring those two areas into the fold?
So we would make a recommendation to the county to add those, that those areas be added to the urban growth area. The county would make that final decision, probably in June of 2016, when they adopt their new comp plan. So those areas would then be in the UGA and eligible for annexation.
So that would be a recommendation by the Planning Commission, sent to council for an endorsement, and then on to the county?
Correct.
If I might, just to frame, our hope is, next week, to bring you a number of alternatives that could meet ends, which have an evaluation, pros and cons, and some economic assessment. Certainly, that might be one of the alternatives, to include those areas and say, what are the costs, independently or together? But we also will have other alternatives, we likely think, including one of just staying within our current urban growth area.
Pingy? Garrett?
Quick question, anecdotally, do we know how much the county is growing? Because if we went from 1,300 a year to 1,100 a year in the city, is the, do we know if the county is growing faster, and that's why we're trying to push more towards the city? Do we happen to know that?
Off the top of your head. I think it's safe to say the county is, and Chris can look up the numbers, the county has experienced the same slowdown in growth that the city's experienced over the last four or five years.
Yeah, that's correct. The overall, I don't have the exact number right in front of me here, but the pattern is similar across all of the small towns, the unincorporated county in Bellingham.
Garrett?
When we're looking at the available land supply, we're making assumptions about housing these people and what housing forms they'll be in. We received a presentation several months ago where I believe the projections for the next 20 years was to be in Bellingham, 75% multifamily, 25% single-family. Tonight, you mentioned 43% multifamily. Have those numbers changed, or what are we, what are we actually assuming, these 30,000 people, what kind of housing forms are they going to be living in?
That was actually a population figure that you were referring to, the about one-quarter to three-quarters. Because multifamily housing, we don't count the same number of persons per household. They typically are lower, something less than two, whereas, single-family housing is typically more than two, somewhere around two and a quarter or two and a half. So the, the actual housing units that we're looking at, given the current, the slides Rick went through there, if you took the totals for inside the city and inside the current urban growth area, the, the growth component we'd be looking at from this year to 2036 is about one-third multifamily and two-thirds, excuse me, one-third single-family, two-thirds multifamily. And about 35% of those multifamily units, or 35% of the total unit yield, would be landing in those urban, urban village areas that were on one of the first few slides that you saw.
Okay. So the assumption for the distribution from multifamily, single-family hasn't changed?
No, it's about, right.
Still roughly 75% multifamily?
It, 75% for population accommodation, as far as the number of people, if you look at the unit yields, it's about one-third single-family, two-thirds multifamily, which is just about the same ratio we had in 2006 with the current comp plan that we're operating under today. The growth component, the ratio really hasn't changed.
Would we be able to get numbers of single-family housing units, based on how many people you assign in your, you know, analysis to a single-family housing unit? And you actually get a number of how many projected single-family homes versus multifamily units? units? Would be our assumption?
Yes, yes. Yeah, we have that total.
Thank you.
Jeff?
I apologize for missing the first time round. I wasn't at the meeting where the projections were discussed and adopted, but I'm a little bit curious about whether there's a potential time dimension possible for UGAs. And by that, I mean, we have to do a 20-year plan, but in fact, there's going to be another comp plan on a 10-year cycle. The closer you get to the future, the more information you have as far as what's worked and what hasn't worked. And so, is there a possibility for having some sort of conditional identification of a UGA, let's say the north and south ones, for year 11 through 20 in your planning horizon, sort of as an option for the future? And see where you are towards the end of this planning period, and at least that's been identified? It seems like if you identify something as a traditional UGA, you don't really know whether it's going to come in in year three, in year five, in year seven, and whether you've achieved your infill or your other density objectives for having efficient development. And it would be a shame to have, I guess, identifying UGAs on a 20-year horizon when, in fact, you want to hold something in reserve, but you still need to identify it. But is that possible, or is that something cities do?
Yes. As a matter of fact, the Waukam County Plan provides for reserve areas. They don't count in your total. The purpose for it and policy base is to protect them from inappropriate development that would preclude long-term use beyond the immediate 20-year horizon. It does allow uses, but it would be mindful about a potential need for long-term. And reserves could be established. Again, county is the body that facilitates that, and there is established policy to do that.
So, that's for looking past the 20-year timeframe, not necessarily the second decade of what we're talking about. I'm just wondering, is there some wiggle room there?
You could always advance it. I mean, as we look, and I think Greg said it on point, we're taking our best assessment. We need to be nimble. We need to monitor, and we need to adjust. We just don't, the worst thing you could do is preclude options for the future. You want to be mindful of what you need and make sure you have a rational plan. Now, you might not need it. That's, many you'll hear will assert that there really is no need, that the growth is tapering, and we won't see an influx. That might be the case. But you can preserve some of those rural patterns that don't preclude future conversion at some long-term date, and if you need to accelerate it.
I just have a quick question. Terry asked about the yield that we could get out of U Street and the north, northern UGA, and you mentioned 1,000, 1,800 people. Are those areas predominantly zoned for single-family development? Would most of those units be single-family units, or would they be multifamily units, do you think?
They're currently in rural zoning. I believe both of them that are in R10A zoning. So, we would determine what the appropriate zoning should be. If they get added to the UGA, we could determine what the appropriate, with the county, determine what the appropriate zoning would be. So, they're very low-density rural zoned areas now. And that keeps them in a holding pattern until they're needed for urban growth.
Do you, the U Street area was in the UGA before, and there's existing development occurring kind of on the fringe of the north end. Do you have any ideas what you think we would be looking at with those, just in general?
In terms of zoning?
Just in terms of use type, yeah. I'm just wondering if we're going to predominantly get single-family out of those, if those come in, or if we're predominantly going to get multifamily densities? Is it possible to answer that?
Yeah, well, it's a little bit of speculation on our part. The South U Street area is entirely single-family now. The property owners in there have notions of how they want to develop, I think, and it's fair to say it would be single-family. In the north, I think there's more opportunity for a mix of housing types. But that, again, that's just sort of speculation at this point.
Sure. Michael?
Kind of related to that, did we, when the city annexes, we need to bring in property under relatively comparable zoning, whatever the county zoning is, needs to be comparable sitting zoning. And that's often the wrong zoning for what it should ultimately be. I'm thinking of the Bakerview area, where we, just north of Bakerview by I-5, we brought in a bunch of territory with an annexation not too long ago, under the comparable zoning. But in my mind, it really ought to be upzoned. When you were doing your calculations for the capacity to accommodate both jobs, and that area is great for jobs, as well as for new housing, did you consider under its current zoning, or did you somehow anticipate that some of those, what I would call under-zoned areas, might be more appropriately zoned, especially if they're in a periphery like that, that's sort of near the bow of our development?
In the unincorporated urban growth area, we use the current county zoning. So, in the bulk of the areas with vacant residential land, that's the urban residential mixed-use zoning, which typically has a density range of 6 to 10, in some places, 6 to 12 units per acre.
With regard to the particular now annexed property that I'm talking about, when you did your calculate, did you calculate under the current zoning? Because in my mind, that's an undercount. In my mind, the city really ought upzone some of that property, and there may be, and that's one of the few areas where I'm thinking there's actually 100 or 200 units of housing and some employment opportunities that are undercounted under current zoning. But you didn't bother to anticipate or guess any of that? You just assumed what was, what is?
We, what we counted for the, I think you're referring to the Pacific Highway annexation area, was, we used that, in that area, if I remember correctly, was zoned for 6 to 10 units per acre under that urban residential mixed-use designation. And so, we took into account that range, and then looked at what had been built historically throughout the UGA since that zone had been created in 1997, and saw predominantly that the lower end of that range is what builders were developing, too, about six units per acre. And then we looked at the critical areas for that area, and infrastructure deductions that would be required, and put a number on that area. If I remember correctly, the proposed subdivision out there is between 400 and 500 units, single-family that are proposed out there, I think mostly single-family, which is in the range of what we had estimated for that area in the 2006 plan.
I just have one last question, if no one else has a comment. When you presented to us initially in December, you showed some slides that provided different alternatives for us to accommodate this deficit, not just UGA expansion. You know, there was talk of infill, not necessarily single-family infill that you already mentioned, but, you know, infill in some of our lower-density areas, or infill, changing the rules in urban villages, adding urban, you know, you presented, I think, four or five different ideas. It seems like the focus tonight is just on UGA expansion. Is the intent that those other options are not on the table, or they're for another day? Or are they things that we should be considering?
What I can suggest is those options were to promote discussion, and boy, did we have discussion. No shortage of strong opinions on that. I think if we go through them and we looked in terms of infill, the track record, it's one where although we acknowledge the efficiencies of it, there's a strong holding to the character of the neighborhoods, was presented opposition to much infill. And quite frankly, the vitality of your community as someone who's recent addition is the strength of the neighborhoods. Our conclusion on that was, we'll take what we can get through existing zoning. Perhaps some modest opportunities may present themselves as we develop an ADU ordinance, and we'll see what opportunities are there. When we looked at the urban village issue, that prompted that discussion of saying, why aren't these, you know, where are the numbers? Why aren't they succeeding evenly? Research both Seattle's assessment of them, as well as Tacoma, and come back saying, boy, to achieve ours will fill our 20-year effort. In essence, adding more will dilute, actually, the chances of the ones we have succeeding. And we rejected that approach itself. So, we sort of have gone through the things that were prompted in those alternatives and come to conclusion about their likelihood, and this analysis is reflecting the outcomes of that exercise.
Thank you. Okay, I think we've kind of exhausted the initial set of questions and comments, so maybe we should take a pause and open up an opportunity for public comment. And then, again, if anybody up here has additional questions or comments after that, I want to give the council and commission members a chance to continue the discussion, so don't feel like that was your last shot, everybody. And I think we'll just open up the public comment. So, I have a list with a few names on it I'll grab in a second. I'd just like to remind everyone that when you come up, state your name and address. And this is the first of three meetings that we're going to have as a Planning Commission. We're going to have an opportunity for the public to comment in all those occasions, and the council's also going to, I believe, have at least one public hearing, or a public hearing is required. So, there's going to be lots of opportunities. So, I'm going to ask everyone to limit their comments to three minutes tonight. When we have public hearings, we usually give people a little bit more time, but since this is a public meeting, and we're going to have more opportunities to present ideas, I just, I'm just going to ask, and there's a lot of people here who I'm sure want to speak, I'm just going to ask you to please limit your comments to three minutes. And I'm going to have a timer, so I'll try and give you a warning when you're getting close to that time period. So, with that, we'll get going. And the first three people, and only people on the list, are Darcy Jones, Linda Twitchell, and Perry Eskridge. And obviously, anybody else who did not sign up, who wants to speak, please come on down. When these three have spoken, maybe you could line up along the wall behind Darcy. Thank you.
Hello, my name's Darcy Jones with Jones Engineers in Bellingham, and I'm here with the owner of Kitec. Mr. Ishi is here. And Kitec owns the property at the north end of the city that we're looking at as an alternative. And I thought that was a great presentation, a good summary of the issues and options, and where we've been and where we're going. I'd like, since I was in attendance in a lot of the discussions on the population, again, and I think I wrote a testimony at the time, but my belief is that the population and allocation that the city council and Planning Commission adopted was a statement, really, that the city of Bellingham is the economic and cultural center of Waukam County. And we need to proactively plan to maintain that status. And in order to build and sustain a vibrant urban center in the city, we need to reach and maintain a critical mass of population, people going in and living and working in the city, and coming in from neighborhoods and having dinner. And it's a critical mass that's going to make our downtown vibrant, and I truly believe that. We talked about the three options, UGA expansion, infill, and densification, and urban villages. And I think, you know, a combination of that is all going to come into play. Thanks for trying to explain the difference on the population forecasts. Again, we're not talking about the high range of the OFM numbers. We're talking about, basically, the medium range of the OFM numbers. That's my understanding. So, we all selected the medium range, but, so, it is a little confusing, I think, Ollie, for trying to clarify, that we're just using the higher end of the medium range. If I, even if I understand that correctly. And again, I think the city of Bellingham is taking responsibility, be the leader of this county. A couple of things with regard to the Kitec property itself, I can tell you, we do have site plans, and we have some different single-family, multifamily, mixed ideas. We also have more employment lands or commercial lands than just the existing tourist commercial zone that we're looking at. Obviously, it's all preliminary, but I can tell you, we have been working with Hart Hodges and his group at Western Washington, and Hart has agreed to come, at least on the May 7 hearing, but he's going to give us some written results. But he's done, he's taken the city's fiscal impact model from your own finance department. It's developed, it's proprietary to the city, and we're-
Thirty seconds.
We're applying that fiscal impact model to our site plans right now. And Hart Hodges is doing that, and it evaluates all the, a lot of the costs and revenues associated with new development, and we're taking that very seriously, I want you to know. And we're getting really good results from the city's model, and we're tailoring our project to meet the criteria of that fiscal model. I'd like you to know that ahead, and Hart will be here to tell you that himself at the next meeting or on May 7. Okay, that's it. Thank you.
Thanks, Darcy.
Hi, I'm Linda Twitchell with the Building Industry Association, 1650 Baker Creek Place, if you need a Bellingham address. One of the things we also wanted to point out was that when we're talking about using the high estimate here, you are allowed to use the OFM estimates, high, medium, low. When we're talking high, we're talking about the Burke Report, which went into the medium area and within the medium range designated a high, medium, low. And the high that we're discussing tonight is, again, the high on the end of the medium range. It's not the high OFM report. Basically, I wanted also to note that historically, Bellingham has grown faster than the OFM median projection, which means we think the current preliminary estimate would be a very reasonable one to stick with, based on historical precedents, give or take the recession of the last few years. Another thing that the BIA would like to note is that in dealing with growth in Bellingham, we're concerned that a broad diversity of housing forms be permitted outright, that when a density allocation zoning is made, that the stated density needs to be allowed for properties within that allocation area. That an increase in the percentage of those who rent tends to be detrimental to communities. Ownership of one's home, whether it's a condo, single-family, townhouse, whatever, creates commitment, involvement in civic life, and we would like Bellingham to set a policy to try to reduce the increasing percentage of rentals in the city. I'd also like to note that we say we have enough land for job or employment, but one of our concerns is, we keep hearing that opportunities that might have come to this area have gone instead to Skagit County, or to Spokane, or whatever. We're hearing this from the realtors and others. I would suggest you guys try and pin down what's going on there. In some cases, I hear stories that they couldn't find sites appropriate because we don't have the right amount or the right combination of land available. In some cases, I hear that they couldn't find housing that they thought they would need for their employees, so they went elsewhere. But that would be a good point to try to pin down, to give some credence to whether we've got adequate resources for the type of jobs we need to support housing and everything else. Thank you.
Thank you.
Perry Eskridge, representing the Waukam County Association of Realtors, we're at 3317 Northwest Avenue here in Bellingham. You know it's bad when the development committee, community, and the environmental community are coming together and saying, oh, my God. And that's kind of what I see happening here. I was talking to some people about what was going on with the environmental impact statement, and we all sort of agreed that what we see on the horizon is this is our last, best chance to get this right. Those of us in the real estate community are starting to see people move elsewhere because they cannot find the lifestyle that they want here in Waukam County, and that should concern us. The environmentalists are concerned that if we don't get this correct, the pressure for people looking for lifestyle is going to push out into the rural and agricultural lands that we all want to keep preserved. And the very real proposition here is that Bellingham drives planning for the rest of the county. There's no other way to put it. It's just simply the way it goes. You are the 800-pound elephant on the table, you're the gorilla in the room. And so, if you don't get this right, there's going to be some significant issues. You've already heard enough about the population figure, the medium that is the actuality that we talk about is the high that you're hearing about from the consultants. If you look at the draft EIS, one of the concerns we pointed out last week at the hearing they had on that across the street, was that the draft EIS is counting on Bellingham taking 36,000 people, okay? They haven't really, and this is a concern that we have, is they haven't really suggested that anything else was going to be possible. I mean, they have the three other alternatives, but the one they're focusing on is the fact that Bellingham- that Bellingham will take 36,000 people and that that growth in the rural and agricultural areas is going to be, be constrained. The housing mix. I took a look at the chart that Chris was talking about with this gentleman up here, and that chart is, is framed in terms of housing types. And so I don't really understand what the discrepancy there is. But the point I want to make is that the preference is still for single-family housing. We talk about people wanting to be close to transportation and wanting to live in an urban environment, but that does not mean everybody wants to live in an apartment, okay? Take a really good look at that and even look at some of your own development and some of the existing neighborhoods around here. People are building single-family homes wherever they can shoehorn them in. They're not looking to live in an apartment or a condo.
About thirty seconds, Perry.
Okay, thanks. The last thing I want to remind you is that I'm glad Hart Hodges is coming. Ask him questions about the populations that's coming here. It's an older population. It's not a population that's the hip urban 20-something that wants to live in a condo. Finally, I want to remind you that the city of Bellingham is under a declared emergency for affordable housing, and you guys have an affordable housing deficit that you're supposed to be addressing in addition to all of this stuff that you're talking about. So keep those all in mind. You got your work cut out for you.
Thank you.
Keith Howard, 4680 North King Mountain Road. This all looks pretty good, but I just wanted to point out one thing there in the area north of Bakerview to the current city limits at Van Wyk. There's no east-west connector in there. The transportation was brought up several times tonight. And it seems to me like it would be wise to extend the urban growth area north of Van Wyk up past the Horton Road in order to promote a, an east-west connector in there. And you can't really get one south of Van Wyk because King Mountain is in there and there's cliffs on the, on the east side. So it seems like to get a contractor-driven development of the road through there, it would make sense to include that in the urban growth area. One other little thing, on the, on the Kitec's property up there, you've, it's, I see a little area that's not included up to the guide. Would that be left in the county or what is that? You know, right where it says UGA and 530? Would, would the city not come out to the guide?
No, we probably, if we recommended adding land to the UGA, we would want to have that entire square, so it would be over to the guide. We wouldn't leave that chunk out.
Thanks. Thank you, Keith.
Hello, Eric Scott, 2933 McLeod Road. Yeah, a gentleman, a couple, two before, I think, addressed some of the issues too about this population increase will drive people out to the county. I think I've said before that I've already, fiance and I are already looking at places out in the county because we're not, we don't trust what's going on in the city. We don't want, want to live in a, what we see Bellingham becoming, a very ugly gentrified, multifamily housing. Certainly, and like he said also before, that the retirees moving up here do not want to live in a giant apartment complex overlooking the freeway that's going on, especially like on the Telegraph Road area. Some very ugly housing going up there. People are not cattle. You, you talk about people like their units to be shoved around and compartmentalized, but, you know, we, we want our private backyards, we want our single-family homes. People do not dream of living in a four-story apartment. Certainly no developer does, I'm sure. The people of Bellingham do not want a denser city. So why were we volunteered to be subjected to that? Why is that a goal that we're not beholden to Olympia to ruin our quality of life? The city frames the issue as if massive population growth is inevitable. It's not. It's, uh, it's planned for, it's built for, and then the developers advertise outside the city to bring in more people, to fill up those units. I think I've said that before, too. Hurry up and pay off their bank loans. So they create the growth that they, they build for. What about a hundred-year plan? We talk about the next 20 years, 36,000 people, and how difficult it is to pack in that many people. What about the next 20 years? What about the next 30 to 40% population growth, whether it's the, the low number or the high number? It's still a lot of people that we're having a difficulty pack in, even if they're treated like cattle. So what about the next 20 years? And if that can't be done, how are developers going to, going to earn their income in that next 20-year period? So, and if they can't, then shouldn't we address that now? Shouldn't we help them transition to another activity now? Some questions that should be asked are, should we grow? Should we be more crowded? Should we lose more of our natural areas in the city? They're much more valuable than land way out in the county. And like I said, the land out in the county is going to be feeling further pressure to develop as people don't want to live in an ugly crowded city.
About thirty seconds, Eric.
Thirty seconds, okay. We're not obligated to house the nation or the world. That's not selfish. It's just survival. Thanks.
Thank you.
Do you guys like pictures?
It's like a pit crew.
What?
It's like a pit crew. Greg needs to get it set up.
Hello, I'm, excuse me, I'm Jeff Kochman. I'm with the Barclay Company, 2200 Rimland Drive. Submitted a letter yesterday, I mentioned this last week. As you consider what to do with the growth and where to put it, we've proposed that you can, at least we'd suggest, look at Barclay as taking on. And we've proposed an additional thousand units of development there. We have, you've mentioned urban villages and how they've grown, and some have grown more than others. Barclay is third on the list. Obviously, downtown is a big number. Fairhaven was second, Barclay's third. We really have only started our residential development in the last five years. Our first project was the Drake Building, completed at the absolute worst time. The economy crashed. It was condominium building, but we were successful with it. It is, I mean, it was a successful, successful project. The cornerstone building, which we just finished in June, is 116 units. We plan to do more. We aren't just going to do multifamily, high-rise or four-story, what-have-you types of buildings. So as we develop, we are thoughtful and considerate, certainly of all the different types of housing types that could occur. And we do recognize that too much of one thing is not good. We acknowledge that people don't all want to live in apartments. How the, how the project shakes out, I can't say, but as we go forward, we keep all those things in mind. And we've done some initial broad brush look at the land area we have. If you, if you went with, you know, a certain type of housing, how many could you get? We think we could accommodate more, and hence the proposal to council. We also have infrastructure in place. We've also spent a lot of time talking to Public Works about future infrastructure and some of the shared infrastructure concepts that have been put forth, both in the economic development chapter and as well, I think, in practice, or you're going to have it in practice. And actually, for what it's worth, our stormwater system in Barclay, the big pond with the path around and so on, it is treating both public and private water. So it was set up as a shared system upfront anyway. So we've already established that. We will continue to do that more as we develop. So from an infrastructure point of view, we're in pretty good, pretty good shape to, to do more and add more. Success factors, I'll just throw this out, a little plug here for incentives. I know council is considering incentives. Downtown success has a lot to do with incentives, and certainly, we're interested in those as well. It's not cheap to develop multifamily projects with structured parking. So just for your information, anything we can, we can see as far as incentive, incentive proposals from council and would be appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff.
Okay, my name's Clayton Petrie, and I live in the Birchwood neighborhood. I just bought a house with a little over half acre. A lot of my neighbors bought their house there for the same reason. This is a chart that the county produced showing the different alternatives, and I wanted everybody to see that. I had to draw in the OFM high and low because they weren't on the chart. So you can see, we're talking about a pretty small sliver of, of the projection that we're studying in the IS. Of note is that none of those go down to the lowest average annual growth rate or the highest average annual growth rate over the last 10 or 20 years. So we've done a wider range than we're even looking at. The next thing I wanted to show you is a 2015 chart of what people bought last year. Your Gen Y people bought 80 to 85% single-family homes. Gen X, 85%. Overall, almost, it's 79%. I think that's really, a really important factor when you're looking at your supply of land. One confusing thing, I think, to a lot of people is that Bellingham's talking about needing to accommodate 3,000 people under the current scenario that you're looking at, whereas all the environmental impact statement information says it's 7,318 people. It's confusing to the general public that the county and the city aren't using the same numbers, especially in official documents like the draft EIS. I wanted to talk about some transportation options, since Mr. Lilliquis brought that up. And in the U Street area, you have fully adopted plans for bicycle routes. The WTA already has planning and, and they serve that area. But the city's already planned arterials and extensions. It's in the comp plan, page T52, you can look up. There's all kinds of stuff in there. Right now, they have to bus almost nine out of 10 kids to Wade King. That's a big deal. You know, that's, it's unacceptable, especially since we put that school there so that people could walk to it. That's where the houses were going. And, you know, what happens is families, they can't find this single-family home that they're looking for, so they go buy it somewhere else.
About thirty seconds, Clayton.
You can't just drop a number. You know, we, like the previous chart, you could, you could see the OFM medium. We've always grown faster than, than the OFM medium. I sent you guys that information. We were almost at the high for the 95 projection for 2010. And about the size of the city of Blaine, we grew that much faster for the other two projections. It's a really big deal because just dropping a number doesn't drop the number of people that come here. It's pretty darn consistent over time, how we grow. And I think we should really recognize that. Probably the county should redistribute any population you don't take. One thing I wanted to note is the rural historical number is 24%, if you, if you look in the draft EIS and other documents. They're going with 15%, and that's to do what you guys are talking about. They're trying to reduce the number. That's not, that's not how low they're growing now. That's a target. They're trying to grow less there. And that is in response to Bellingham's offer to grow more, to take more people. I think we can do it. I think we don't have a great housing mix right now, and we need to fix that, or else we're not going to be able to capture those people. Thank you.
Thanks, Clayton.
Hello, my name is Christopher Granus, 701 Chuckanoa Drive North. If I understood Rick's presentation correctly, the, if we choose the mid-range population projection, Bellingham will be pretty much full in 20 years. And there isn't much space we can expand into. So if we go with even the medium number, what do we do in 20 years? Bellingham is full. Do we say we can't take anybody else? I think we should think way beyond that. I think we should think 50, 100 years. In fact, I think we should decide what kind of a city we would like to be when we have to reach sustainability, because inevitably, that will happen at some time in the future. And begin there for planning for the next 20 years. Change the subject just a little bit. The real estate representative pointed out that Bellingham is the 800-pound gorilla and sets the pattern for development in the whole county. And I agree with him. I think if Bellingham chooses a high number, there's going to be a high number coming to the whole county. Part of it is because, as Clayton Petrie just said, people want single-family housing. Bellingham doesn't have much room for much more. The more growth you have in Bellingham, the more pressure you have on the county for single-family housing. Lastly, I'd like to point out that the number, the population projection numbers were based on 1990 to 2000 and 2000 to 2010. They didn't take into account the fact that from 1920 till about 1960, there was very little growth. That's 40 years. Then there was a spurt of growth in between 1975 and 1990. The growth rate was much lower than any of the projections that we're talking about now. Not only that, but the growth rate trend from '07 to now has been going down. The number of people who moved to Bellingham in 2014 is less than 500 people. And I think that's about half what the low-growth projection is. So I would urge you to take those growth protect, growth-projection numbers with a grain of salt and choose the lowest one so that we have more than 20 years to fill up. Thank you.
Thank you, Christopher.
Good evening, commissioners. Cal Lindstra, Bellingham. I, I think Clayton said quite a bit of what I was going to say, but I wanted to point out, having been in the real estate business for about 47 years now, that the Burke study, I think, has got it about 180 degrees wrong as far as where people want to live. They're proposing somewhere like 78 or 80% or something like that multifamily. It's not going to happen, I don't think. And this is not Bellevue, it's not Los Angeles, it's not Seattle. It's a completely different culture up here. People do not want to live in a condo or a multifamily unless they absolutely have to, or they're a student, or possibly a retired person. So we, we need to get a little more realistic. And I don't know if Burke came up with those numbers or the city planning commission. I never heard those particularly emanate from the city. I think, I'm wondering if that's a conclusion of Burke and if Burke is making policy or city is making policy. But anyway, we need to think about that, and that's what people want, and they'll drive as far as they can afford it. And that's about 180 degrees opposite of what the Growth Management Act goals and objectives are. It's not to drive 50 miles one way to home in the country or in rural land or ag land or some other resource land, and then drive to work in Bellingham. That's, that's not achieving our goal, I don't think. So, projection-wise, I think Clayton pointed out pretty clearly that every projection that's been made has been superseded by actuality. I mean, what are we paying these people for? And this is, this is wrong, you know? These guys are way off. In the private sector, they'd be gone. So we need to really consider about real growth instead of desired growth or no growth or vanity growth or fantasy growth. It's the real growth that we should be taking a look at, the real situation. And in that regard, I want to put in a plug for South U Street because Darcy, he plugged North UGA at Kitec. Ours is just as good, if not better, because we're surrounded by urban development right now, including probably the biggest park in the city and another 26-acre park right alongside of us and two or three other 10-acre parks that the city owns. And the city owns another 40 acres just south of us. So we have water sewer, a brand-new school adjoining our property, adjacent to our property that was put there because that's the, the committee that...
that was put there because that's the committee that did the site selection said, they were told that's where the growth would occur.
About 30 seconds, Cal.
So it's not happening, and we can make it happen by developing about 75 acres that we have in South U Street. So I'd hope you give that consideration. Also, Freddie Mac just came out and the subtitle of their report on growth was "Great Expectations." So you may be seeing some growth you haven't even considered or thought of yet. I mean, they expect growth higher than any time since 2006. So I think we've got to be realistic here. So if growth is going to happen, we might as well accommodate, accommodate it than rather than starting to be going crazy trying to fix it when they get here. Also, Bellingham used to take 62.3 percent of the growth from the period 1995 to 2002. Now they're taking something like 28 percent of the growth. And their projection is what, 30 percent or something like that, 35 percent? Certainly not the 62 and 1/2 percent that they were taking a few years back. So Bellingham is the way to grow, and the UGA, particularly the UGA Reserve, is the way to accommodate the growth. Thanks for listening.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Isaac. I live in the Happy Valley neighborhood of South Bellingham. I graduated from Western last spring, and I plan on staying in Bellingham for at least the next five years, if not longer, hopefully longer. And I'm wondering if it's all right if I could get a showing of hands about something? How many of you guys are under 30? And you guys are welcome to chime in. How many are under 40? Okay, so we have people here that are under 40. How many people are under 50? So we've got three in the audience and then you guys. And how many are under 60? So we still have about less than half the audience. How many are under 70? Okay, okay, that's, that's more like it. So when people say, when the audience is saying, when the audience is saying, "People don't want to live in blank," are we representing the full age group of people from 18 to, what's reasonable age to die, like 90? 18 to 90, are we looking at that range? Are we looking at the range 70 to 90? And if we're looking at a 20-year plan, how much of that last 20 years is going to be spent in the same house that you currently are? Are you going to be living with family members? Are you going to be living in a nursing home? Or are you going to be living in the same house? And if you are living in a house, are you living in an 8,000-square-foot house that you can't maintain? And how are you going to maintain that? So what I'm trying to push the point of is, no, we don't want these cheap apartments that are owned by Landmark. And when it molds, Landmark says, "Yeah, we'll fix that." Never. We don't want that. No, we, and that's why people keep on saying that, the audience keeps on saying that, "No, we don't want these condos and everything." But we don't want sprawl, so we can't expand housing outwards. We don't want infills, what people have been saying at this discussion. They've been, I've heard a few people mention that they see problems with too much infill.
Hey, Isaac, about 30 seconds.
If that's a problem, and if we don't want density, where do these single-family homes go? And I'm not saying that we should build more dense. I'm not saying we should do sprawl. I'm saying, what do we want? Because we're only talking about what we don't want. So how do we achieve higher numbers of housing units without creating infill, without creating sprawl, without creating density? Thank you.
Well, that's a tough act to follow. Sorry. I, my name's Carrie Veldman, and I will be representing the development community since I work for one. I work for the RJ Group, and most of you have heard about my project up in the Bakerview Annex area. And I'm really commenting on Michael's question earlier about that specific area. And we are the largest landowner in that area. We own 75 acres, and the zoning is six units per acre. And anything above that, you can buy TDR, Transfer Development Rights, to increase the density. Right now, our proposal is 440 units, and that is the, taking the lowest six units per acre. Because my job as a Huxley grad is to stay away from those very nice northern wetlands on our property. We've condensed it down to 33 acres. And we've achieved a really desirable housing mix, lots of single-family. It's actually 75 percent single-family, 25 percent multifamily, so 110 units would be throughout, spread throughout multifamily apartment buildings. But a lot of what that happens to be is something that actually can't meet our current code. We've been working with planning staff to try to come up with different ways where we can create these housing forms that are infill forms but yet don't sprawl, that it's already in the city where we can accommodate utilities and other services. I encourage you to continue to work on that code and have the flexible options that come about with the subdivision ordinance that hopefully still achieves what we're trying to do with creating infill but without sprawl. And there's lots of opportunities on this particular land. We did have the opportunity to upzone that area with the annexation. We chose not to just because we're a developer, we have timelines, we have bank commitments. That banker sits at the table, as you can imagine. They don't come to these meetings, but they do play a big role when it comes to finances. So I just wanted to let you know about that, encourage you to have these conversations with staff in terms of how we can work with the, the planning staff to create these unique types of housing forms to Bellingham. They're not unique anywhere else in other jurisdictions. They've become very successful. They're seen in our infill toolkit, you know, townhomes, garden courts, small lot housing forms. They're all very achievable, except for in Bellingham. So we're working on that, and I am looking forward to having that conversation with staff in the future. Currently, we're proposing Phase 1, and we're trying to work within code to do that. So if you have any more questions, follow up with me. Thank you.
Thank you, Greg. I just want to have the map up on the wall so I can point out something. I'm Louise Bjorenson. I live in Birchwood, and thank you very much for your attention during this long meeting. I'd like to point out an annexation that's coming before the city shortly, and it was a different color in one of the other maps. But where, where I'm looking at is west of the freeway, south of Bakerview, where the land juts in like that. Maybe you can see, do you have a one that has, has that? Yes, there it is. It's purple right there. That area has been of concern on what the zoning would be as it is annexed for quite some time. It first came before the city council in the 90s. There was a huge petition citywide of this is a concern of how it is developed and what is the zoning as it comes into the city. We have lots of shopping centers on the east side of the freeway, and right now, this is called Gateway Industrial, and the county allows shopping centers in Gateway Industrial. Doesn't make any sense, because you'd think Gateway Industrial means industrial, but no, it doesn't. So the proposal from the city was that it should be indeed called Light Industrial so that we have the jobs that we need. It's right next to the airport, right next to the freeway. It's a really good place for light industrial. So I'm just bringing that to your attention, that as you're looking at annexations and as you're looking at the usage of property in that area, that you work with the county to make something that would, this would be good for Bellingham rather than just a blanket zone of what it is right now. Gateway Industrial pretty much allows most everything. We have plenty of shopping centers east of the freeway. In this area, we need to have light industrial. Also, that area does contain some wetlands, too, that aren't noted on the map. So this is a very sensitive area, and it will really impact the city if it's not done very carefully. So just bringing that to your attention. Thank you very much.
Good evening. Excuse me, Paul Schissler, 1-3 Prospect Street, Bellingham. I'm an independent contractor, and I wanted to focus on affordability. The Growth Management Act, I think, makes that one of your most challenging issues. And I'm particularly interested in housing affordability, so I wanted to focus a couple of my remarks on that issue. And it may be that there's a silver lining, too, if I can get to that point. There's, the problem of affordability may have some upside if we can be innovative and solve the problem like others have not been able to. I think the world might be the best to our door. That's a problem, too. We don't want to get more gentrified at the same time. So as you're looking at population projections and the job projections, I want to point out the obvious thing, that there's, there's another dimension to that. The wages and incomes of the jobs you're projecting are, well over 50 percent of them are going to be low-to-moder income wages. They won't be paying a median wage. And we all know, you can't afford to have a home in Bellingham on just one median wage. You usually need two jobs in a household or more in order to afford even a basic rental. And, and it's very difficult to buy a home, single-family or otherwise. So if you factor in what you can check about the wages and incomes of the increasing population, that'll tell you a lot about what kind of homes you'll need to plan for. And the GMA requires that you plan for homes affordable to every economic segment of the community, including the ones who are here now. So I wanted to call your attention to really one of the most user, do I have to switch So the State of Washington just published the, a really excellent set of numbers, a very user-friendly report, I started to say, excuse my notes on this. But if you go to the State of Washington Department of Commerce, or just Google "Washington Housing Needs Assessment," you'll come up with this executive report. It's only about five pages. And then you can also zero in on reports like this one. And I don't expect you to be able to read that, but if you look on the left, you see that number 11 there, the gap, number 11? That means for every 100 low-income, very low-income households already here in the community, there are only 11 homes affordable and accessible. For every 100 households in that income category, there are only 11. So that's just one indicator of the current need. The same kind of information is available at the county level at that website. So I'd encourage anyone who's interested to go there. And it's really a great service for the state who have made that information so available. But what it does show is that over half the population in Bellingham who rents a home can't afford the home they occupy. They're spending an unaffordable amount every month, so they don't have that household income to spend on other things, because too much of it gets soaked up for their housing costs.
About 30 seconds, Paul.
I also wanted to say multifamily housing is getting too much of a bad rap tonight. I mean, some of the most desirable places in the country are multifamily, high-density urban neighborhoods, and people pay a lot of money to live there. That's also true in Bellingham, in Fairhaven, near where I live, in multifamily housing that's condominiumized. But even the rental multifamily housing, the vacancy rate is near nil in this town. People filled up the downtown multifamily rental units as fast as they're being built. So it's not a question of everybody wants to live there, but some people do. Is that 30 seconds already?
Yeah.
It's also, renters are also getting a bad rap, too. But the multifamily thing, the urbanized neighborhoods, is where you get the tax revenue. So I think the city should be encouraging those kinds of neighborhoods so you get the benefit of the vitality, lots of local businesses, and a better tax base. So multifamily is really what you're going to have to do, because people can't afford single-family homes, especially new ones, and especially in greenfield developments. They're all going to be very relatively expensive. They're not going to be relatively affordable. And what the numbers have shown you is that at least 50 percent of all the dwellings built every year should be affordable at 80 percent of area median income or below. So what you can do, that sounds like how you're going to make up half the housing in that income range. What you can do is you can increase the number of homes built per year with incentives, and there's lots of good ideas for doing that. So if you double the number of homes built per year and half of them are affordable, everybody wins, including the general contractors and suppliers and the tax base. So that's maybe the silver lining. If we need that many homes, not to mention converting so many of the existing homes into some kind of affordability, there's a silver lining there, at least in terms of jobs, training, business opportunities, and tax base.
Thank you.
Patrick McKee, Grant Street in the city of Bellingham. I have often heard, in the discussion about what population projection to accept, I've often heard it said that Bellingham has to take a high percentage of the population for Watcomb County in order to protect farmland and open space in Watcomb County. I'd like to point out, tonight, I think I've heard from Planning Director Sepler that in unincorporated Watcomb County, Bellingham taking more of the population projection, that's not working out to protect unincorporated areas of Watcomb County. And I think I heard Councilman Lilliquist say that it's not working out that way also, the way, the way the county is distributing population. Watcomb, unincorporated Watcomb County is divided into thousands of five-acre parcels. The people that are buying land in this part of Watcomb County are not the buyers who are going to want to live in small houses on small lots or in condominiums in Bellingham. So the point I'm trying to make is, if you're, if you're looking to protect farmland in Watcomb County, cramming population, high-population figures into Bellingham is not going to achieve that goal. The way to protect farmland in Watcomb County is to increase the money available for the purchase of development rights and downzoning. If that's, if that's what you, if you want to protect farmland, that's a more effective way of doing that. So I'm hoping that we stop using this argument that Bellingham has to accept a high-population figure. I would like to see the city council and the planning commission adopt the lowest figure that OFM offers to the city. And then, if that's not working out, as the planning department staff said tonight, you can adjust that figure over time. Thank you.
My name's Larry Horowitz. Thanks for the opportunity to comment. Greg presented this information but didn't spend a lot of time telling you about Table 2. The first two columns are the information that you were given when you first made the decision. The last two columns are the updated information, because the information you received earlier didn't have the information from 2011 to 2014. It really wasn't available to OFM. It wasn't available to Burke either. So when you consider that, you can see what happened in 2011, 12, and 13. Now, some people have commented that OFM put out a press release that they had a huge increase in population in the state in 2013. True, but it didn't, it didn't continue, because if you look at 2014, that 2014 number is still well below average from the last 14 years. And when you focus on just the last seven years, you can see that the average has only been 587 people per year for seven, for the last seven years. This data is not reflected in any of the information you were given when that early decision was made for the high forecast. decision was made for the high forecast. This chart's really interesting. So this was produced by a gentleman who has a PhD in population biology, and he knows all of these statistics. It's John McLaughlin, who is a professor at Western. And what this basically shows is, these white dots from the very beginning, or circles, show the average population from that particular year through 2014. So the first one is 1969 to 2014, and '70 to 2014, et cetera. What I'm getting to on this is an issue called cherry picking. The information that you're basically basing your decisions on are from 1990 to 2010. If we extend it to 2014, we're still looking at 1990. If you look at this chart, you see that 1990 was the peak of a bubble. You cannot extrapolate the future on 1990. If you go back, and now Greg has said it's difficult to go back in time, because the UJAs didn't exist until 1990. That's fine. This is city of Bellingham information that OFM provides through 1968. 68 is the first year that they provide information for cities. So if you go back in time, you see, we did have a bubble, we did have a big increase, but since 1990, the average has fallen every year. And we are way below even the low forecast of 2017. These are the real growth numbers. People say we want to use the real growth numbers. You don't have the real growth numbers. This is probably the first time you're seeing them.
About 30 seconds, sorry.
30 seconds? This is the projections done by OFM, okay? Just want to address something that Clayton said. It's true, what he said, that up till now, we've never not met our growth forecast. But if you look at this, this is OFM telling us that Washington's net migration is expected to be less than what they anticipated. We're going to be below what we've anticipated in the past. I mean, people invested in NASDAQ.com stocks that had never fallen either until 2000. I mean, it just doesn't last. These bubbles will burst. We're still in the recession. We had one year of an uptick in 2013. It was not continued through 2014. So you really need to pay attention to the real growth numbers. Thanks for the opportunity to comment.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to make a public comment?
My name is Stoney Bird. I live in the York neighborhood. I moved to Bellingham in 2011, having spent 21 years in Skagit County, where I was very active in growth management affairs, often working with friends of Skagit County. And I was glad Michael brought up the connection between transportation planning and land use planning, and that Paul brought up the connection with people's incomes. But in both land use planning and transportation planning, the practice in Washington State and around the United States has been to predict something, population growth, or the increase in the number of cars, and then to provide what that prediction calls for. That's the backwards way to do it. What we should be doing is having a public discussion about what kind of growth we want, and then following through with that. But, see, we're under a legal threat under the Growth Management Act. The Office of Finance Management tells us what we have to do. That's wrong. We should be setting our own objectives. This community, the people of this community, should be setting the objectives for our We should have a vote of the people, both at the county level and at the city level, about what kind of growth we want. And if it has to be, because of perceived legal difficulties, if it has to be an advisory vote, we should still have that vote. So I urge, I guess it's the council, to consider that, and ask, really ask in a serious way, people, how much growth do you want? Because growth produces problems for most people. How much growth do you really want? And let one of the options be zero.
Is there anyone else who would like to make a comment? Going once. Okay. I think that's everybody who signed up and came up to speak, so I appreciate very much all the comments, all the interest from the public. And again, there's going to be additional opportunities to provide comment, so I would encourage you, on behalf of the planning commission, I'm sure the council feels the same, to continue to provide comment, participate, and share your thoughts with us as we move through this complicated issue. So with that, I'm going to close the public comment opportunity, and I'm going to open it back up to the group to ask questions, maybe, that were generated by that comment of staff, or continue discussion if anyone so desires. Tom?
Regardless of what people think, we have no option but to accept growth. I mean, growth management dictates it. We can't put a barbed-wire fence at the South County line and allow no immigrant to come from Skagit County, or King County, or Los Angeles, or, you know. That's just not an option. In my mind, if we plan it, doesn't mean that they will come. But if we don't plan it, and they come, we're in a world of hurt. When I first came to this town in 1970, the biggest thing going in Fairhaven was three I would maintain that probably it's better now than it was then. And that's happened because of growth. I mean, sure, we don't get Joan Baez at the Fairhaven Tavern for three days after she had her concert up at Western, but overall, I think what has happened in Fairhaven has turned out for the better. Anyway, that's my long way of saying, I think we got to plan for the growth, maybe hope that it doesn't happen as significantly as it could, but if we don't plan for the growth, yeah, we're just going to be in a world of hurt, lots of problems, I think.
You. Phyllis? Phyllis?
Well, I tend to agree with that. I think that we could sit back and, you know, put a gate up at Alger and hope that nobody comes north, but that's not going to be in our best interest, because I just think we don't, unless we have legal control over who comes, we don't have legal control over who comes. And I'd rather see us accommodate them in an organized, civilized fashion, and function, making decisions now, and like Rick was saying, we can have trigger points in which things are moved forward. But we don't have to necessarily build the infrastructure now, but we're thinking about it. At least we have thought about the concept. And the other question I have is, of the sequence of meetings that we have relative to this subject, when are, what is our timeline, and when are we coming up with a recommendation?
If I might respond, it's the planning commission's pleasure. You take whatever time you need to do it. Our thought had been to come with some focused alternatives that would prompt the discussion on point, and then see if there was direction from the planning commission next week to prepare an alternative, a recommendation that could be considered in early May. We would like, we're under obligation to the county to advance a recommendation from the council in late June, early July. That's the agreement we have with them. We have reserved the 7th of May, that's two weeks from now, for anticipated public hearing, but if the planning commission needs additional time, clearly, you take the time you need to get your best recommendation. So that's the parameters.
Do we have a list of our meeting dates for the next month?
Yes. If I'm not mistaken, that was provided to you. It does have a meeting next Thursday and the following Thursday. And then we have the regularly scheduled meeting two weeks after that.
Got it. Okay.
Michael?
I'm just wondering when in the discussion, I think the most important part will come up, that is, spending. So these population numbers are really there to drive capital planning by the city. What number we pick helps the school leadership plan when, how many schools to build, whether we need to widen roads, whether we need to expand pump stations for more water flow. At what point in the discussion will we be able to sign dollar values, roughly speaking? We're estimating in round, round millions in infrastructural costs for the various alternatives. Presumably, the alternatives where most of the growth is in the city, we're just talking about some upsizing, but I assume we're putting price estimates to the upsizing. The reason why I say this is, picking a number without knowing its consequences is sort of a consequence-free exercise. When will those consequences be integrated in this process? Is that in two weeks, three weeks, or a month?
Next week.
Next week.
We anticipate it. If you stay the course with existing zoning and anticipated population, your adopted plans have estimates of cost. So those are numbers we've already adopted. We use that as a baseline. We will evaluate, and we've been working with our colleagues in Public Works Parks to look at getting good, realistic numbers for you for the cost over the planning horizon for these areas. And clearly, we believe it's very important you know the relative cost and trade-offs for the issues you consider.
Jeff?
So one thing that I thought was interesting in what you just said was, I believe you were talking about, given existing zoning and existing, essentially existing, housing types and characteristics. And I'm somewhat interested in, really, when we're looking at the big picture on these numbers, when you start varying housing forms and looking at the subdivision ordinance and some of the more unpopular things, what is the cost of growth of that, again, within the existing boundaries? Because part of the idea here is, you know, what's the most cost-effective way to provide affordable housing? And how's the people that are coming? And what alternatives do we have, short of assuming that everybody on those charts, the 80%, has to be in a single-family house, you know, a 2,000 or 3,000-square-foot house on a 6,000 or 7,000-square-foot lot? I'd hate to have our planning assumptions driven by that, if we don't even know what the costs of adding some other housing forms into the mix would be.
If I might, just a preliminary response, and we'll be more detailed next week on that. We anticipate, coming before you with the subdivision ordinance, that will allow for the zone density be realized through some flexibility of some of the standards, but not exceed it. In essence, the zoning that's in place now could more likely be achieved, where in our land use capacity, we've discounted out some of that development. We don't think it's significant gains, though. We think it will help. It's one component part, but we can take a look at that coordinated strategy of what we might anticipate over time and talk of some of those costs. We'll see if we can get that prepared for next week.
Steve?
Yeah. This happened a while back. It seems like we are getting conflict, conflicting information as to what do people want? Do they want single-family housing? Do they want multiple housing? And we're running in different directions here. We haven't even solved, or given us, what is really going to happen here. And I know it's all crystal ball, but I'm confused. What path do we take? Multifamily? That's where it's going to be? What do we do? Do we follow, everybody has said tonight, single-family? That's the demand. That's what we've heard tonight. So I'm confused on that point before we go any further, to tell you the truth.
If I might, I think you heard testimony from Paul Schissler, that I think was on point on this, is that under growth management, we're required to provide a range of housing types and styles. The question is, what's the right mix? And to some degree, we don't control that. We can put clues there, based on trends we're seeing. We tried to provide in some of the materials we provided you this night about changing demographics and what we anticipate needs to be. I think the best answer is, it is an imprecise science, and we will need to do course corrections periodically. This update to the comp plan is a course correction. What's changed since the last time we've done that? How do we proceed? We are all learning to be more comfortable with uncertainty.
Thank you. Cerise, do you have one?
I do have a few things. One of the things that I would point to for that directly would be what Carrie was mentioning. 75% of their project is single-family, and they've, I'm sure they're doing the numbers, they're developers, they're looking at what people want. And the other folks that spoke tonight are also looking at the numbers of what people want. And so that's what people are buying. Not that people don't want multifamily, but majority want single-family. So I think that's sort of, you know, a good point to bring up. In addition, I also really appreciate Isaac's point of, let's talk about what we want instead of what we don't want. Let's have this conversation based around a positive mindset about, let's come, we're all here together to talk about what we want. So how do we do that, instead of focusing on what we don't want? So I would like to have the conversation be directed that way, personally. You know, population growth, I think we're, in general, we're in agreement that it's happening. If you look at Seattle, if anyone's been in Seattle, I'm from that area, and I've seen growth go outrageous right now. It's like, everywhere you look, there's a crane, it looks different. And they didn't plan for it smartly, and traffic's horrific, everything. People, I have tons of clients coming from Seattle to, you know, to get away from Seattle. But if you look at other cities that plan properly, people want to live there, San Francisco, New York. You know, you look at other cities that, Portland, for instance, they were very thoughtful in their process of planning and growth. So I think, I think we should look at some models of what's working, and I think it's going to be a mix. It's not going to be one extreme or another. It's going to be a mix of things. But that's why we're all here, to work together, to find, you know, how does that work?
I have a quick question about next week. We've been presented with these key issues. We've been presented with some options preliminarily, and we're being asked to look at potential decision in two weeks. And it sounds like next week, you're going to be coming back with some more detail on the financial implications of these options that we've been presented with. But is the intent that the planning commission as a body would have kind of the discussion that Steve and Cerise are alluding to, about where are we going, housing type, these key issues that you brought up, and really get into those details and have a dialogue and be able to ask questions? Or is it expected that we're going to just talk about kind of the financial implications of these few options, and, or is that up to us?
Well, two things. We've had a long discussion that resulted in the currently adopted comp plan. And that discussion talked about a mix of housing types, talked about preference of preserving communities, and in existing single-family home neighborhoods, providing opportunity and choice, and that's your policy base that's adopted. That being said, it's prudent to say, are these assumptions still right? You know, is this still where you're trying to achieve? I imagine this body will be spending the next year, you know, working on that. The narrow question in front of you is, should the UGA be expanded to accommodate additional population? Or is it prudent to leave it as it is? That's a question. So next week, we introduce that notion narrowly in saying, do you think we can accommodate the population, and what should be the population, and how should we accommodate it? We will bring back alternatives for you to consider that would frame a number of choices. They will give you the pros and cons from our perspective on it. We'll do the best we can to imagine the benefits. We'll do the best we can to imagine the benefits, as well as the challenges of each. I'm sure we'll be aided by members of the community if we miss things. That being said, at the end of the day, it's for you to consider in the next few weeks which path is best, and then to perfect the planning over the course of the next year to implement it most fully, consistent with our plan. Our financial information is to ensure that it's not done without consideration of the relative costs. We need to be aware, eyes wide open, what the different options cost, all of us, and make prudent decisions based on that. So we think we have confidence we can come back with some good alternatives that will be provocative, that will promote discussion. Clearly, we'll raise a number of issues that will be unresolved, but put on, on the whiteboard for further discussions we go forward. But we think it will allow you to focus on the issues at point. And it's the Planning Commission's pleasure on when, how much time you need to devote to this. While we're, we're concerned with schedule, we're more concerned with good discussion, having a rational basis for it, being thoughtful in what you recommend. If you feel you can do that in a couple of weeks' time, that's great. If it needs another week or two, if you need more materials prepared, we'll certainly give you the analysis to be able to make a good decision.
Thank you. So you're not necessarily looking for direction on what to bring back next week? We kind of have a plan to bring back.
Based on comments and testimony, we have a wide range of choices. Our chance is to bring a series of bookends, and clearly, it could be any of the alternatives we present. It could be a combination of several things that you see as working, or it could be something that the Planning Commission crafts new cloth, based on what you heard. Clearly, we will have a recommendation from staff of a direction we think is appropriate. At the end of the day, though, it's whatever the decision Planning Commission makes is the decision we will recommend fully to the city council for their consideration.
Okay, great. Thank you. So is there anyone else from the council or commission who would like to make a comment at this time? Pinky?
Just a quick comment. I just wanted to say thank you very much. This was a very well-laid-out presentation, and I think too often, we're always looking at short-term, our society's very immediacy, and I think it's wonderful that we're looking long-term about, we have no choice but to grow and to do it smartly. So I just wanted to thank you for the overlays of the maps. It was very logically laid out, and I appreciate the format you presented it on. So thank you.
Thank you. Okay. So with no other comments, I think we'll close the work session portion of the meeting. And again, appreciate all the public participation and comments, and I'm sure we'll see many of you next week. And thank you, staff, and thank you, council, very much for participation. This is valuable. So I appreciate that. And if you, you want to hang out, you can. We're just going to do our last little housekeeping bits, or feel free to do what you need to do.
I'm going to adjourn the city council portion of the meeting. Yep.
Okay. Excellent. Thank you very much. Yeah. Nice to meet you.
Yeah, nice to meet you, too.
And just, well, we'll wait a minute here for people to filter out before we wrap up. And to the public, if you could please carry on your conversations out in the hallway. Thank you. They can't hear me. Where's my gavel? Okay. Thank you, planning, very much for that presentation. I know two council members made statements about how helpful that was and logical, and I felt the same way, so really appreciate it. So, you know, on our agenda at this point is just old and new business. I don't know if we have anything from our end staff, is there anything you want to talk about?
You had asked that we touch base with you on rental registration, just for an update. There's not a matter that will be in front of you, but understand the context of that. We're happy to do that. If you would give us a little leave to focus on this issue at hand with the UGA and the population, the first opportunity after that is resolved, we'll come back and do an informal presentation to you so you understand the purview and intent.
Thank you for that.
I just would like to comment. I think what you're heading toward is exactly what I'm looking for, but I just would like to know, when we weigh the alternatives, what are the consequences, short-term and long-term? And that would be really helpful to me.
Okay. Well, I don't think there's any other business, so our next scheduled meeting is the 30th, which is next Thursday, and we'll be continuing our discussion of the same topic. And that's it. I think we'll adjourn. Thank you, everybody.